Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Tuesday, March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, Meeting of the Milton Select Board. This is a Zoom meeting on July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Governor Baker signed into law an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, which among other things extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to March thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-three. The act does not make any new changes to the open meeting law other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings. All votes for this meeting will be by roll call. At this time, I'd like to introduce the members in attendance at this meeting. Martha Doyle, this year's chair.
Mike Zulis, vice chair.
Richard Wells, secretary.
Aaron Bradley, member.
Roxanne Musto, member.
Nick?
Nick Osvaldo, town administrator.
Lynn?
Lyndon Apple, executive assistant to the SLAT board.
Kevin?
Kevin Frytag from the Office of Town Council.
Thank you. Could everybody please join in the Pledge of Allegiance? My pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
One nation, indivisible.
At this time, we would like to turn to item number three, which is public comment. And just to remind everyone that we have up to fifteen minutes set aside as SLAT board meetings for public comment with anybody wishing to participate every up to three minutes for their comments or presentation. I see one hand, Maggie Oldfield, could we promote Maggie? Maggie, welcome and good evening.
Hi, thanks for having me. So I'm Maggie Oldfield, I live at three ninety-seven Hillside Street, and I'm a town meeting member from precinct five. On Saturday, I attended the Conservation Commission and School Building Committee meeting regarding the land swap proposal. It was stated at that meeting that some of the land included in the swap is the forty acres at Pope's Pond. This led to some confusion and questions because since nineteen sixty-three, we, the residents of the town, have been under the assumption that this land was already in the care and custody of the Conservation Commission and was already protected. But apparently, it's not. It was discovered in the past couple months that a clerical error occurred and the land was never classified as such. I understand mistakes happen, but I also understand that mistakes can be fixed. So to fix this error, the Pope's Pond land will need approval by town meeting to change the deed from the Town of Milton to the Town of Milton Conservation Commission. It's a small change, but I think it's a very important change. We need you to right a wrong. I urge you, our select board, to please fix this error as a standalone article at the fall town meeting. Because a land swap issue is very technical and somewhat controversial, I do not want the residents to be concerned about the lack of transparency or misinformation around the proposed land swap. I think including the land at Pope's Pond as additional land for the swap is an incorrect overstatement. This land should not be identified as new conservation land because it has always been conservation land to us. Additionally, I'm greatly disappointed that you guys are putting forth an article to take land out of conservation by the Act of Eminent Domain. Eminent Domain is viewed as a gross abuse of power. To suggest a taking by eminent domain implies to me, just the average resident, that you don't have the authority to acquire the land respectfully or legally, and this action is wrong. My understanding is that no other town has ever done this, and how are we supposed to feel good about this action? If you pass this, I feel like Milton will kind of suffer a blow to our image, both in terms of how others see us, but really, more importantly, how we see ourselves. If you support this type of practice now, will you support it in the future? And I feel like if you support this type of practice, you will expose how failed the protections of conservation land have become in the town, and you will cast a dark cloud over the landscape of Milton. I urge you not to support a land-taking by eminent domain. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands at this time, we'll return to the agenda where we would like to move items four and five. So at this time, we will have a discussion approval, capital improvement planning committee recommendation for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four capital budget. And Mr. Wells, did you want to introduce this, or maybe turn to Mr. Milano?
Mr. Chamberlain, I'm gonna just pass this ball right to Mr. Milano, because it's already to go. Sorry, guys, Nick.
Thank you both, good evening. We touched on the capital budget a bit last week, so I won't go too much into it again this week. I'm happy to take any questions if there are any, but as kind of we, as we discussed last week, we have over a hundred and twenty-three million dollars in requests over the, over the five years. That covers fiscal twenty-four, fiscal twenty-eight. You know, close to twenty million dollars in proposed town and school facilities, over six and a half million dollars in DPW infrastructure, six and a half in parks infrastructure, six million dollars in DPW ER and building site improvements and upgrades, as well as ten million dollars overall to department equipment, technology, and vehicles. The fiscal twenty-four recommendation is to approve approximately four point two million dollars to be borrowed and utilize one point two million dollars in free cash. There are other funding sources, including CPA, that are being used for capital requests in fiscal twenty-four. Some of the items, or I should state that, you know, by and large, our capital budget is, is put, being pushed to maintain and improve our existing facilities, equipment, and vehicles. There's very little that would be considered something new. It's more about maintaining what we have or replacing what we have. There's a large number of new equipment that's being funded this year. Some highlights include information technology equipment, both for town hall through the town IT department, as well as through the school department for items such as Chromebooks, as well as other end-user devices. New technology, new school technology that will install contacts on all the outside doors for security purposes. A lot of new equipment that's replacing equipment that has reached the end of its useful life. Couple of the other larger items are a million dollars for roadway construction, which is our typical appropriation for roadway projects to maintain our roads and try to improve the quality of our roads around town. We have a hundred thousand dollars as well for traffic coming projects to try to do some small projects around Milton that will help slow cars that are going through neighborhoods. An eight hundred fifty thousand dollar appropriation for a new engine to keep the fire department on its regular rotation in terms of replacing its frontline apparatus. The other thing I'd like to mention, as I mentioned last week, is the million dollars for a salt shed down at DPW. This is an item that we had planned for fiscal twenty-five, but have moved forward just to try to get the ball rolling on that project because of the age of the existing salt shed. It's, it's time to replace that, and that has passed its useful life. So that's kind of a high-level overview of what the budget includes. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. And the reason for wanting to change the order of these two items is that the capital improvement budget is a part of the whole. And it made sense to go with a part before we treat the whole. So, has Mr. Milano invited any questions for him on this agenda item, please? Ms. Musto, you're recognized.
Thank you, I just have a quick question. I'm wondering if there were any grants that were available for any of these things? I know there was something recently about security, some kind of security grant. So I don't know if you can, was that ever approved, or anything more about that?
Sure, you know, we're always seeking out grants if we can for especially capital projects. We find that it's often a place where we can have some success. There is a, there is a grant program out there for school security projects. One that has been mentioned as a possible would be the technology project that I mentioned to add contacts on all the doors so that there's an alert if a door is open and it's not supposed to be open. There's, you know, there's typically other projects, project grants, especially in terms of public works projects, whether it's safer schools or some traffic calming projects. So if opportunities arise, we go chase them. Everything that's on this list would, would be planned to be paid for with town funds unless grant money does come in to replace the town fund.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Wells?
I, I thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just gonna follow up to what Mr. Milano said exactly there. Ms. Musto's question, Mrs. Musto's question. All the things that I can think of that apply far into grants, they don't even make it to the capitalists because they pursue those very often. And just when that we did, this board pursued a grant for seventy-five thousand dollars for all of the judge permitting and testing to be done on the ponte river. Came through the lending committee, and that was a seventy-five thousand dollar grant that was funded this year through the Seaport Council. There are a lot of those that go on, but they don't even make it to this because one of the things we do strive to do with the capital committee is whatever we can get off the plate is we do so, I think we'd, we have a hundred and twenty-three million in requests in the next four years on the capitalist. So it's one thing to build all these buildings and maintain all these vehicles and own all these vehicles, all this equipment and all this technology, but it's another thing to maintain it, keep them efficient running. Thanks, Nick, for that. I hope that answered that question, Roxanne.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Any other comments or questions on this item, please? I see none, we do have a motion to be made.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve the FOI twenty-four capital budget as recommended by the town administration.
Second. Any amount, dollar amount? Is that five million, six hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars? Do I have that right?
You do.
Thank you. It has been moved, is there a second, please?
I think Mike, I think Mike Zulis seconded.
Seconded.
Okay, I'm sorry I missed that, but I was thinking the dollar amount being added. Thank you, moved and seconded, any further discussion? I see any roll call vote, please, Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. This time, we'll go to item number four, back to item number four. Discussion approval, Select Board Finance Committee report, fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four budget recommendation. Mr. Zulis, may we call on you, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just a very brief introduction, and then Mr. Milano can go through the details. The Select Board Finance Committee has been meeting for the last few months on this, oftentimes with the Finance Committee, the School Committee, School Committee, since the schools comprise by far the largest budget in town. We've spent that time reviewing the expenditures for the town and reviewing revenues and changes in revenues. The town administrator has presented a level service budget, initial level service budget, which included contractually required items. And we were able, the town administrator was able to balance that budget. There are some additional items that, that the Finance Committee has recommended, and the town administrator is recommending that go beyond the level service budget and into what is the needs-based budget. The School Committee voted a needs-based budget. The Town Departments submitted their needs to the town administrator. And so the school, I mean, the Finance Committee reviewed with the town administrator some of the additional, of the additional items that would go into a needs-based budget. Some of the items of additional revenue that we had this year, we had an extraordinary amount of free cash, an amount of about four point four million dollars. This is more than twice of what we usually have in free cash. It was an extraordinary year in that regard. In addition, we, we had a zero percent increase in health insurance, which was unanticipated and resulted in a savings of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so the Finance Committee, working with the town administrator, is recommended, and town administrator's budget recommends a needs-based budget, I'm sorry, a level service budget with the addition of approximately nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars of additional items. That includes approximately thirty thousand dollars for the library, thirty thousand dollars for the fire department, seventy-five thousand, seventy-four thousand dollars, seventy-four thousand dollars approximately for the police department, which includes two police officers, which would, which will help us with traffic, traffic enforcement in town, twenty-five thousand for the IT department, eighty thousand for DPW Traffic Engineer Consulting Services, twenty thousand dollars for other DPW projects, seventy-five thousand dollars for DPW Vehicle Maintenance, five thousand dollars for Council on Aging Programming, six thousand dollars for the parks, five thousand dollars for the cemetery, and an additional amount for the schools in the amount of six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That includes five hundred thousand, five hundred thousand dollars of, five hundred thousand dollars of items plus the additional amount for health insurance for, for some positions. Now, just a couple of things to point out. This budget includes five hundred thousand dollars for the stabilization fund. It includes three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of a wage set aside. These are one-time items that are used from the free cash. Includes some other items from free cash, including a contribution to the OPEB Trust Fund. It includes two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the School Building Committee. The total free cash used for one-time items is one million, five hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars. We also using free cash for capital, which is an appropriate use in the amount of one point two million dollars. We do recommend, and the town administrator is recommending, using one point six million dollars of the free cash for recurring operations. Now, it is not a good idea to use too much free cash for recurring operations because they are one-time items. However, given the fact that our free cash over the last several years averages in the, in the neighborhood of two million dollars, one point six million dollars for recurring operations is not outside the box, and it allows us to provide for the needs of the town for this year. Now, it is not sustainable for us to expect four point four million dollars in free cash. So the town, the residents of the town, will have to make a decision. Will have to make a decision whether the town wants to continue some of the services that are represented in this budget. So this budget of the town administrators is recommended by the Finance Committee. It is also supported by the School Committee as well. So with that, I probably went a little bit into too much detail, but Nick will, will fix anything I said that was, was, was off target.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zulis. Before Mr. Milano joins, I just wanted to ask if Ms. Bradley has put this Select Board Finance Committee had anything that she would like to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that the team, I appreciate you allowing me to have a few comments. I think that the team, both at Town Hall and with the School Department, came together and really gave us a robust budget this year. One of the things that I had asked for multiple times was that I wanted to see what the actual budget was, not a rollover, not a needs base, but what the actual budget was that our departments have been asking for, for multiple years that had been denied. The team was able to, as I say in the meeting oftentimes, shake the money tree and find some acorns that fell out, and we were very lucky for that. This is a unicorn budget. This is a budget that will allow us to see how the town operates with more of the needs that have been put aside for the last five years. And it will give the townspeople the opportunity to see if these are things that they would like to keep in our town, including things like traffic mitigation, the library, Council on Aging, as well as the schools. So it was, it was really comprehensive undertaking that everyone went through, and I must say that it was extremely cordial and very respectful. And it was, there was an understanding that everybody needed to get something, and I'm very happy to say that we were able to get almost everything for all the departments. There's very little that is not being funded this year from what our departments townwide said that they needed. So I just wanted to thank the math crunchers that were for their efforts on this. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Mr. Milano?
Thank you, and thank you both. I think, you know, a lot was covered. I'll, I have a few slides here, so I'll run through these relatively quickly since we've touched on some of the items here, but I just to provide a little bit of detail to what we've been talking about over the last few minutes. So that's showing up now. So as Mr. Zulis and Ms. Bradley indicated, this budget does maintain our current level of service, but it also invests in department needs that we heard from department heads from across all of our town departments. And as we just discussed in terms of the capital budget upgrades, it funds upgrades and improvements to vehicles, facilities, equipment, and infrastructure. We've also made with the five hundred thousand dollars transfer to general stabilization a very healthy transfer into that stabilization fund to start building up those stabilization funds and reserves. As you well know, we, we had drawn down money out of those funds, but paid the fund back in the last few years. As we look forward with this large amount of free cash, a half a million dollar transfer to stabilization is helpful for maintaining that level of reserves. We've also, we're also investing heavily in, in our pension fund. We are achieving full funding of that pension in the next couple of years, and, and there are increased payments to keep on that track included in this budget. And as Mr. Zulis noted, there are, there is an use of one-time funds to make this budget work. I think we've all acknowledged that from the beginning and understand that those monies likely will not be there for fiscal twenty-five. So as Mr. Zulis indicated, we've had frequent meetings of the Select Board Finance Committee, as well as our counterparts on the School Committee. At the beginning of this process, we developed a five-year financial forecast. That was one of the first tasks we undertook, engaged with all of our department heads on what their needs were to pull those together. We first worked towards funding that level service budget before we looked to what those needs might be and what we could pull together. And I owe big thanks to Amy Dexter, obviously, as the Town's Finance Director, who is, has a lot of familiarity and knowledge of the School Department, as well as Emery Fagan, who preceded me throughout the summer and tackled a lot of the nitty-gritty details while I was getting up to speed, getting to know people, and spending that, my first few months working on that, less so focused on the particulars of the budget at that time. Overall, strong revenue projections for fiscal twenty-four. Typical new growth forecast at about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars and a big increase in state aid again this year. Just wanna also just, as we all know, our proportion, mostly of our property taxes do come from the residential tax base. So where we can access those other funds, particular state aid, local receipts, other revenues to the town, it helps relieve a little bit of that pressure on the residential tax base. So overall, in fiscal twenty-four, we have an increase of state aid of about nine hundred thousand dollars. A, a big portion of that is from Chapter Seventy. Another big portion of that is from the state paying us more for our state-owned land. The state has been pushing more money into the state-owned land budget account, which means that the Town of Milton, with all of our land that's tied up by the state, is getting more money each year. It's a couple hundred thousand dollars this year, it was three hundred thousand dollars last year. So it's real money that's coming to Milton in the last few years. Just to kind of give a little bit of history on Chapter Seventy, education aid, which is the biggest component of the aid that comes to Milton from the state. As you can tell, just from looking at the chart, the state has been pushing more money behind education, and that has filtered down to Milton in a big way. Unrestricted general government aid is one of the other locally categories. That stays pretty flat, so I just like to show this because it's not a place where we can expect substantial changes year over year. I mentioned state-owned land, and as you can tell, just from looking at this, just from fiscal nineteen to now, it's more than, it's close to double. And it, it means close to over, you know, almost one point six million dollars is coming to Milton for our, our state-owned land. The other thing I like to point out is on our local receipts, meals tax revenues have been booming, which means that people are visiting Milton restaurants, which we like to brag about when we can. Last year, in fiscal twenty-two, nearly three hundred thousand dollars in revenue from meals tax alone. This year, we're already close to, we surpassed that halfway through this year already in terms of matching us from last year. So, you know, we appreciate everybody going out to visit our local restaurants, and it's a good sign for our local economy that our meals tax revenue is doing what it's doing. Mr. Zulis mentioned free cash, four point four million dollars certified by the Department of Revenue in free cash. And just by looking at the last ten or so years, you can tell that this really is a bit of an outlier. You know, roughly around two million dollars a year, give or take, depending on the year, is probably more accurate as to where we typically would be. To have four point four does stand out, and the reasons for that are, are multi-fold. But we had one point two million dollars in excess revenue over our fiscal twenty-two budget projections. But we had one point two million dollars in excess revenue um over our fiscal twenty-two budget projections. Um, that means where we estimated local receipts, for example, our our meals tax, for example, was um was below what we brought in. That closes out to free cash to be used by the town. We had departmental turnbacks, which means departments didn't spend every dollar that was appropriated to them at the end of the year. That closes out to free cash and is available to be spent at a later date. That was two million dollars. The two big components there were health insurance. We had a million dollars um left in our health insurance budget at the end of fiscal twenty-two. If you'll recall, in fiscal twenty-three, our health insurance budget did go down, um, and that's because there was, um, it just was over budget in twenty-two. Uh, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the police department was turned back in fiscal twenty-two. Um, as you all know, there's been turnover in the department, um, as more senior officers retire, younger officers come in who are lower on the salary scale, and that just generates, um, that generates turnbacks. And then the other item that contributes to our kind of one-year unanticipated free cash um calculation was eight hundred forty thousand dollars from the Department of Revenue that they held back last year. Um, they couldn't determine exactly where that funding was with with the town. And then rather than uh release it to the town, they held it, and they released it this year. So that's truly one-time money that we can expect will come up again next year. Uh, and this has been covered already in terms of where we are drop pushing that free cash a lot into um the capital budget. A big transfer to general stabilization of five hundred thousand dollars, um, contribution to our OPEB trust to start paying down our li- liability for retiree health insurance. Uh, one-time expenses, um, the school building committee, and then uh money directly into the operating budget. So some of the bigger expenditures in fiscal twenty-four are are listed here. Health insurance is is a big component of our budget. Um, we added zero percent premium increase in fiscal twenty-four. Um, we are self-insured, our trust is at a healthy level, so for employees and for the town, that means um nobody will have their premium go up. It's not something we can offer all the time, so we're, we're happy to be able to do that when we can. Um, debt service is just as we fund the capital improvements, we can anticipate our debt service to grow up. And then Blue Hills Vocational has um an increase in students from Milton, so we have an increase in assessment from there. Um, and then just in terms of our level service budget requests, every department's funded at a level service um from the begin, from, that's where we tried to get to in the first place, which we were able to. We are funding the upper positions that were included last year. You know, there's, there are a number of positions at the school department, and the community health, social worker that's in our health department um is included in this year's budget. Um, and there's nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars in needs-based requests that Mr. Zulus mentioned. And we tried to identify um issues that we've been hearing from from department heads for a long time, uh, staffing at the library. So we're able to to um give them the opportunity to hire a part-time employee in the next fiscal year. Traffic enforcement, we're able to push money toward the traffic engineering consultant um in lieu of hiring a traffic engineer, um, push money in our capital budget to traffic calming projects, um, and add staff at the police department to assist. Um, overall, and their staffing um efforts to focus on community services and traffic enforcement. Um, in information technology, it's it's not uh one that jumps off the top of the screen, but if we're gonna make improvements into how we do our business in Town Hall and elsewhere, then we need to put money into our information technology budget to be able to buy new software, improve our software, upgrade our website, um, upgrade the modules that we have within town that work uh for us. Um, and the last thing I just want to mention is there are a few departments that had small requests, whether it's the council on aging looking for five thousand dollars for programming, parks and cemetery with small requests, which we were able to meet in this year's budget. Um, you know, there were needs-based requests that weren't funded, um, but that's always part of the conversation each year, and it will, we'll pick it up again for fiscal twenty-five to identify what we can do to maintain our current level of service and continue to expand and improve upon the services that the town provides. So, um, that's all I had to share. I didn't want to take up too much time, but wanted to wrap it all together for the board, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you for your very thorough presentation, and I want to compliment everybody in following uh the budget process for FY twenty-four. Not an easy one uh by any means. Everybody pulled together. Um, it was a town-wide effort, the town as a whole, uh, working together to make sure that we got to the point of where we are at the present time. And uh, that deserves um the chair's recognition. So please pass a line uh for those who may not be uh available to hear um my appreciation. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for any uh comments or questions. Ms. Musto, you are recognized.
Thank you. Two quick things. One is, um, is there a way to separate this out, um, because I'm I'm going to be abstaining from the DPW budget part of this? So I would like to see if that's possible. And the other thing is, could you please explain about the free cash in terms of how it's spent? I remember from my days on the warrant committee, it was only to be used for one-time um one-time thing, uh, one-time expenses and not to be used for any kind of positions. So I'm just trying to understand that definition. So those would be my two questions. Thank you.
Sure, I I think, you know, I think in a typical year, wh- where we would look to push free cashes is, you know, transfers to stabilization to the capital budget to one-time expenses. Um, I think where where we saw a free cash certi- certified amount um on the scale of four point four million dollars, um, it it opened up additional opportunities that the town might not otherwise take advantage of um just to fund some some additional needs and requests in this fiscal year, knowing full well that that money is, we can't count on it recurring back in fiscal twenty-five, so it it presents some conversation that we need to have about that fiscal twenty-five budget. But I think, big picture, in a, in a regular year, um, we wouldn't immediately look to using free cash for um recurring operations. I think this year is just, it's just a little, it's just a, it's just an outlier. And I think um the opportunity to take advantage of it, to to fund some of those needs, uh, we didn't want to let go by. Um, and and doing it full well that um we're gonna have to have that long conversation in fiscal twenty-five about about what to do kind of long-term to solve that that question of that deficit that we face on a, on a typical year. I don't know, Mr. Zulus, you wanted to add anything to to that answer?
Yeah, I think that's, that's fair, and there have been times over the years, even when we haven't had uh an excessive amount of free cash, when we have used some free cash uh in order to tide us over for some needs of the town, in order to provide the services that the the citizens and the residents deserve. So, um, so we have done it uh over the years, and and there is a justification, um, given the fact that um our average is roughly about two million dollars, so we, we, we do take about two million dollars every year. So, so to, so to use one point six, I think puts us in the range and is certainly justifiable and justifiable with the um, with anyone who looks at this budget, including um any, any Wall Street analysts that have viewed our budget practices over the years very favorably. And oh, to answer, oh, to to answer the question, Roxanne, on on the, um, I think we can um do two motions. Um, I think we can do a motion um to uh approve the town administrators administrator's budget as presented, except for the DPW portion, and then to approve the town administrator's budget as presented with respect to the DPW. Those would be, that'd be my suggestion for those two motions.
Thank you.
Right where I was going. Thank you for that. Uh, Mr. Wells, maybe you were going to the response as well. You recognize, you are on mute, is it?
Space bar is not working it. Um, I was gonna say the same thing Michael said. We can do two, yeah, we'll vote two more, two sums, one without the DPW and then a second with the DPW. So, Nick, if you could break those out, I'm ready to vote.
So, so, so I'll make a motion if uh if if the chair would like.
Please.
So I'll make a motion uh to approve the town administrator's budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four as presented, except with respect to the DPW line items.
I would like to second that.
Thank you, Ms. Musto.
Nope, Ms. Bradley.
Bradley.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Bradley, thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, roll call vote. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Second motion, Mr. Zulus.
I will move to approve the town administrator's budget for fiscal twenty, twenty twenty-four. Um, um, uh, as presented with respect to the DPW line items in the budget.
Thank you, is there a second?
I would like to second that.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Roll call vote, not seeing any questions, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
I'll abstain.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you. And um, Mrs. Zulus, uh, so that our our public understands the uh total budget, um, I just want to make sure that that's uh recorded as part of our meeting tonight. I have a hundred and thirty-one million, five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, and thirty-two dollars.
Hundred and thirty-one, um, hold on. Oh, hold on, let me.
My fingers are the correct ones.
Uh, where are we? One, one hundred and thirty-one million, five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Which represents a six point five-three percent increase over the prior year. That's correct.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to item number six, which is the discussion, update, and approval of the annual town meeting warrant articles. And let me please take a moment beforehand to uh go through the, just the procedure that we'll follow on this. Uh, first, we'll need to open the warrant, and then we will uh take uh three uh particular articles individually, voting on them individually, after which we will then uh close the warrant. And if I've gotten anything uh wrong, please uh correct me on that. So uh this time, I would um uh entertain a motion to open the warrant.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Moved and seconded, seeing no comment. Mrs. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Uh, we have with us Sean O'Rourke, Chair of the School Building Committee. And at this time, I'd like to recognize Mr. O'Rourke.
Thank you, Miss Chair. Uh, once again, Sean O'Rourke from the School Building Committee, uh, and also a town meeting member of precinct eight. Um, I I do have a presentation to provide context around the three articles i- if the board desires. Uh, I can walk through that.
Uh, thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. I think that would be helpful at this time. I'm assuming it's um abbreviated and focused, since we've seen much of this in the past.
Um, I, it it's, I I can move through it as quickly as I can, sir. Yep.
Thank you.
So i- 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 as the boards are aware, our our current uh schools are are over-rolled. Uh, essentially, what you're seeing here is is the current enrollment. Uh, the yellow line represents the school capacity. Uh, we're, we're working essentially one grade level above the existing capacities of the school at the elementary school level. Uh, as the boards are aware, there there are a number of uh oncoming things coming, specifically the forty D projects. Um, the, what our, what our committee has worked on for four years and has come up with is uh the development of upper middle school at the high school campus. Uh, and then by doing so, alleviating space at all levels throughout the educational system of the district. Uh, by doing so, by the the the, uh, what we're proposing with our project, we would then pull all those uh levels below the capacity level, essentially solving the overcrowding that we have. Um, very quickly, you know, the district right now is, you know, because we're overcrowded, we're using spaces that are not meant for classrooms, gymnasiums, cafeteria, music stages, carts, hallways, uh, even libraries. So previously, the Collycock Cunningham Library, because of rooms that were done in the middle of it, got, you know, very condensed and tight. Uh, recently, under that cold snap that came through uh about a month ago, a pipe burst in the Cunningham School and essentially took out two classrooms. Those two classrooms displaced teachers that are now on the stage at the Cunningham School, uh, essentially behind a curtain. The other thing it's done is that condensed space that you see, that you saw before, is now a a kindergarten classroom. So in the, in the Collycock Cunningham Library, we have three classrooms in that location and a teacher's office. Couple the overcrowded facilities with the underfunding uh that the students in in the district experience, I'm not sure how we're gonna ever achieve the educational excellence I hear so much about in this town. For site selection, i- is the boards aware, uh, we've made concessions uh throughout the entire last year to revise the project that we had approved previously. Uh, by doing so, we're utilizing less of the conservation land that's there. Uh, specifically by doing so, we've realigned Gao Road, uh, we provided a fifty-foot conservation buffer along Home Inc. Uh, we, we have a three-hundred-foot conservation buffer from Blue Hills Parkway. And additionally, there's additional land behind the conservation uh behind Home Inc. Overall, we're using about a third of the overall parcel uh for conservation land. Um, the school building committee and the conservation committee, along with a number of residents, walked the site this past week, uh, partly to see, you know, what it looked like. What you see here was the previously approved um concept design that we came up with. Currently, uh, our design looks like this. We, we've engaged under contract, the RA Architecture, to develop similar conceptual designs, and we'll be engaging the neighbors to get their inputs as we develop those. Specifically, uh, our neighbors at Home Inc. Uh, a- and I mentioned, you know, we had a fifty-foot conservation buffer along with a fifty-foot zoning buffer, essentially a hundred feet away. As we walked the site with the Conservation Commission and and members of the public, the land is all staked, so people could actually see physically where those boundaries would be. In regards to the Article ninety-seven land swap, um, we're proposing swapping in two parcels on Herrick Drive and one on School Street. Uh, the middle portion of Randolph Ave. On the Randolph Ave site, there's been questions whether it is wet. Uh, I took pictures to show it's all upland. And then into Article ninety-seven, we, we've actually revised this uh as of today uh to remove a parcel, and we're at ten acres going into Article ninety-seven land with a total of seven point two-six coming out. In addition, uh, Pope's Pond uh is not owned by the Conservation Commission. So as part of, outside of the Article ninety-seven land swap, as part of what we're working on in these articles, uh, we'll be deeding the conservation land, or the land of Pope's Pond to the Conservation Commission. Overall, when you look at just conservation land, again, we're u- utilizing much less, two point eight acres, and we're putting into conservation over fifty-six acres. And then essentially a map of what those would look like. And that is all I have for you tonight, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Well done. Appreciate. Um, at this time, I'd like to ask if there are any questions anyone has of Mr. O'Rourke. Uh, seeing none?
Oh, Mr. Chair, I have one question, so.
There you go.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, Sean. So explain to me this forty acres, because I, I, the comment that was made earlier tonight, that's the first I heard of it. So there's forty acres around Pope's Pond that is not in conservation restriction now? And you're gonna put?
Yeah.
And you're gonna put it into this project because you have to, or is this doing this because it was, it was? I take it, at least I'm, I'm only, I, I didn't know anything about this till tonight, so. So you just happened to find this? How did this, is that, how did this happen?
This, this, i- 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 as, as, as you know, with our project, it has been a lot of work in the past year.
Right.
And during that work, we had found through deed research on Pope's Pond that it currently is not deeded or owned by the Conservation Commission. So as we found that, and also as we started developing an article for eminent domain, part of the consideration that could be paid as part of the eminent domain take would be deeding over the cons- to Conservation Commission, the entirety of Pope's Pond.
Okay. Okay.
Any further questions or comments?
I think that's all I have for right now. I'm good. Thank you, Sean. I think that's all I have for right now. I'm good. Thank you, Sean. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. At this time, let us turn to.
Mr. Chair, Roxanne has her hand.
Sorry. Thank you, Roxanne.
Um, thank you. I'm just wondering, are we going to be going through that actual, the wording of the article and everything now?
Yes. What I wanted to suggest that you're in exactly where my frame of mind is to read, since there have been revisions, some of which are very recent, to read each of the articles as they come before us tonight, so that everybody has an understanding, both within and without the meeting. So the first one authorized is the Select Board to acquire land owned by the Town of Milton. And I'll read this in its entirety. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to acquire for general municipal purposes, including without limitation, school purposes, by purchase, taking by eminent domain or otherwise, all or a portion of parcels of land owned by the Town of Milton and located off Gou Road in Blue Hill Parkway, which parcels are shown on the Town of Milton Assessors Maps as Map D blocks six A and six B, Lot sixty-five. And to see what consideration the town will vote for the purposes of this article, whether by appropriation, transfer of land or otherwise, and to act on anything relating there too. Thank you, Mr. Milano, for putting that out. Are there any questions or comments on this proposed article? Mr. Zulus?
So, um, so thank you, Mr. Chair. Has this article been amended from what we approved previously? Do we not? And maybe that's from Mr. Freitag.
Yes, there is a revision. Mrs. Zulus, um, the there's a section taken out, a small parenthesis, that read the Gou Road property, close parenthesis. Mr. Wells? You are muted. Richard, you're muted?
I got it. I got it. I'm off. I'm off. Between hands and mutes. So this has been asked of me a lot, and I know it's not something at least I've ever been involved in. And I know it came up. I believe it came up a lot. This is why I was away out of state. We're, why are we taking spam into main? That's my, like, how did this come about? And why is that? We're taking town land by eminent domain. Why are we? What happened now to change the path of where we've been for the last year?
Okay. Sorry you missed that, but you're right. We'll go to Mr. Freitag. He has an explanation for this.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the Select Board, Kevin Freitag from the Office of Town Council. Mr. Wells, to respond to your question, I would sort of bring to your attention that within the past year, in August of last year, there was a legal letter written by attorneys, a firm that represented abutters to the property at Gou Road, that suggested that the land at Gou Road was held in a public trust. So in addition to the Article ninety-seven restrictions, which are state restrictions, state constitutional restrictions on the use of this land, they also suggested that the land was held in a public trust. And so through office, through research conducted by my office, we concluded that a way to address the claim that the land is held by a public trust is for the town to essentially take the land by eminent domain. So it's it's taking it from itself as trustees of that land. And in doing so, that sort of resets the use parameters, if you will, of the property. So this was, this is in an attempt to address an issue that has been raised in a precise matter, so that, you know, that the town could try to move forward with this project.
So follow up to that, if I may. So we're going to ask town meeting to allow us to take this land by eminent domain? Correct? Okay. And as all of us know, and look, and I know how hard Sean has worked on this, this committee has worked, this is not an area that we, I mean, I I've never been involved in anything where we've taken anybody in the domain. I think this is an uphill lift to get there. I think we're gonna have to be able to explain this. I don't think you're gonna get through town meeting without being asked a lot of questions about this. It's just not something that we've, I think you have to agree with, it's not something we've ever done. As Nick knows, we talked a little bit last week about questions that have been asked, you know, on the prior thing that we're working on, Fompone, you know, why do we take that by eminent domain? So and I just, these are questions that are just being asked. I've never been involved in anything eminent domain. I just think that from a strategic point of view, you're gonna have to be really fully prepared on this. I I really do, because for me, I I don't think I could answer, because I don't know. I've never done anything like this in my nearly four decades with the town in many capacities, so. I I and I and Sean, I I get how, I don't, but I think it'd be absolutely foolish of the foolish of us not to be able to answer these questions, because I think they're definitely gonna come. Unless everyone disagrees, but that's, I see that happening.
Mr. Bradley, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It was my understanding that these questions had been raised at a previous Select Board meeting that Mr. O'Rourke had attended, and we went through this completely and totally. I'm sorry if you were not there, Mr. Wells. But I do believe that we've already gone over all of these these items as to why it's eminent domain at this point.
I I'm not worried about this Select Board meeting. I'm referring specifically to Kevin and to Sean and to us. We're going to go to town meeting, ask the town meeting to support something that we've never done. And I know, we know that question's gonna be asked, so I I use the term, I use the term terra firma a lot. You know what that means, Kevin? I think that you wanna be able to answer everything as you can to get there. I could see Mike Zeus's chin in his hand, so I know he's listening to what I'm saying here. Having been at many town meetings, as I have, as you know, you have as well, Mike. So I'm just asking it now.
Mr. Wells's advisory is to be prepared. People have to understand this in its totality.
This is an area, we're we're walking into something we've never, ever done. And I'm and not, no, we're not talking about taking a corner lot at the corner of Maine and Adams. Or, you know, we're not talking about take, we're talking about something that is truly significant here. As you know, Kevin, as you know, Sean, and and Mike, it's multifaceted to get you to where you are you are now. And this is a new I don't know if I wanna call it tool, the toolbox. It's definitely a new procedure and a strategy to accomplish your goal that I know if I have questions about it, we, anyone who's been at town meeting, any, and we know how town meeting goes. You know, we think we're gonna be at town meeting, we're gonna be out an hour, and you're out at five, you're thinking about one night, you're out at four. I'm just thinking we need to be very strategic in this. This is way bigger than just our board.
Thank you, Mr. Wells.
That's it. I think I'll I'll shut up at this point.
Mrs. Zulus, you're recognized. Then Ms. Bradley.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. And so, so, Richard, I I think you're 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 right on all of that. I I I was just confused. You said you'd never been involved in one of these things before. I mean, the the town has taken property. And I think the last time, probably maybe the year before you were on the Select Board. To probably, so the the town has taken property before. This is a unique circumstance where, as Town Council has pointed out, a a an issue has been raised, and in order to deal with the with the issue efficiently and and upfront and have town meeting decide it, this is the path the Town Council has advised. So, so it's a, it's a, it 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 may be, it may be it may be a unique action, but it's a unique circumstance. And and we don't, we don't try to build a school every day. That's that's for sure. So. So anyway, so I, but 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 on on eminent domain, I mean, we we have done that before. We haven't done it for a few years. So just just to, just to kind of fill that out.
Ms. Bradley?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say that I was able to catch some of the warrant committee meeting last night and the discussion that they had for, I mean, I I didn't catch it until at least nine forty-five or ten o'clock. And they kept going for another hour, so I can only imagine what I missed prior to that. But I I will say that it is a unique situation, and it is one that is very complex and one that many in our town struggle with, with the word eminent domain. It's a very scary word. I understand that. It's a word that means that they could come in and take your own home. And as property owners and landowners, that's a very, that's a very scary thing. But there's also something else about eminent domain, and and that's for the good of the people. The good of the Commonwealth, the good of our town. And I think that, you know, if if my neighbor's houses were all on fire and we had to pour water on my house and ruin my house to save the rest of the town, I would gladly do that. I think at this point, this land, and and I've I've researched it as well. I've been on the warrant committee for the last five years. I've heard Sean's presentation, so much so that I can recite it in my sleep at this point. But I think that this land, we've fulfilled our duties as a town to the Lamb Sisters. And we've fulfilled our duties to what the the agreement was. And that that ended quite some time ago. Right now, our town is in desperate need of a new school. There is no way to sugarcoat that. My son has lunch at ten thirty in the morning, which some of you may say is fine. That's great. He's a growing boy. I don't think that's fine. We have a lot of things bursting at the seams at our school. And so for me, when I look at the words eminent domain, I remember what it was used for back in the days of yore, which was for the betterment of the community and the betterment of the citizens that live there. And so for me, this is something that I do hope the town meeting votes in favor of. And I understand that the warrant committee had quite some issues with it last night and had to take multiple votes on it. But we're at a crossroads. We're at a crossroads, and I think that there has been enough information that has been given out for many, many years now about this. There have been many studies. They've looked at all the options. I mean, if anybody would like to go talk to Sister, I was just gonna say Sister Marietta, who is not really what her name is, but she's on the Sound of Music, over at Fompone, and have us get that school, that would be great. We tried. We are trying everything that's that is known to humans to make this happen. And so I just really implore the Select Board right now to think not only from our standpoint of representing all the town, but also as a fiscal agent, which is the fact that if if this doesn't happen by eminent domain, there will be lawsuits, and it will cost us a lot of money. And I don't know that that's anything that folks want to undertake to push this back by years and to and to cost us money to end up where we would end up now. And I know that many people have differing opinions on this. But I think that this is our best option for our town. I'm not being nonchalant about the matter that the Lamb Sisters had wanted this. They wanted it for thirty years or forty years. I can't remember which one it is now. And we did that for that time allotment. We did that. I lived next to a school. Nothing has happened to my home value. In fact, it increased because I lived next to a school. There is no harm that will be done to Home Inc. There will be nothing done, you know, that is, that is gonna cost them their well-being and peace of mind. I can tell you right now, I can look at the middle school with a lot of screaming kids, and I rarely hear them, rarely. This is not a detriment to our town, and so I really implore the Select Board to take this vote and take it seriously for the whole town. Thank you.
Ms. Musto, you are recognized.
Um, thank you very much. I was, I have a couple of comments, but the first one is, I would like to ask Kevin Freitag, have we taken conservation land before in the Town of Milton? That was my first question. The second one is, in reading the article at the beginning, it says to acquire for general municipal purposes, including without limitation, school purposes. And I'm wondering, excuse me, why we would not have just said to acquire for school purposes? And then after those are answered, I have a couple of comments. Thank you.
Mr. Freitag, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am not aware of Milton having taken any conservation land by eminent domain.
And as far as the the question I asked about the actual article itself, with the first line in it, I don't know if you wanted to comment on that?
That's really up to the board. It's your article. If you'd like to tailor it in some fashion that's narrower than how it's currently written, you're entitled to do so.
Okay, um, may I can, may I ask if, or have a comment here? But what I'd like to say is that I think eminent domain is a tricky thing. I think it's a slippery slope. This land is conservation land, and the full intent was for the land to be preserved as conservation. I always hear that this agreement expired and so forth, but I I watched part of the warrant committee meeting last night that I could catch, and there was somebody on there who had spoken with a Lamb descendant who clearly had said that was the full intent is for it to be conservation land and not be built on. So I I do have a problem with that. I think that it sets up a very bad precedent. There are people in this town that leave land for conservation purposes. And if we start with this property, once, where's the end game? I think it's very dangerous slippery slope. I don't think it's a good thing for the town to get into this whole argument of doing eminent domain, because it it makes it easier to do the Article ninety-seven. We should be doing what's right. And I don't think that's right. I think that we should be taking the high road and doing the right thing. And by doing this and taking land by eminent domain, which is conservation land, it sets up a very scary precedent for other people that have donated land to this town. You know, when people donate land to the town and they want it in conservation, or if they, if the town buys it and we keep it in conservation, it's for conservation, and the expectation is that it stays that way. And once you start messing around with it, how good is our word as a Select Board or people that served before us and made these decisions? So I guess I would ask all of you to really consider that and think about how good our word is. Does it matter? Does it matter that somebody left something in conservation with those expectations? Why are we going after eminent domain if we really feel this is a good project? We should just do things the right way and take the high road. We weren't thinking this before, but now that we got a letter from an attorney, now we're thinking this is a better argument. At the end of the day, it's still taking conservation land. It's still, you know, setting a precedent. And I I worry about the precedent that it's setting in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Mrs. Zulus, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to clarify a few points. And so I'm just trying to go back to the documents. So I'm not gonna pretend that I know what people's intent was forty-five years ago. I'm not gonna pretend I know what that was. All we have are the documents. That's what shows us what people did. They actually did forty-five years ago. We have a deed, the only document signed by the Sellers, the Lamb Sisters, that has these conservation restrictions. There is nothing in there about a timeframe. It could have said for thirty years. It could have said for fifty years. It could have said for two hundred years. It could have said in perpetuity, but it didn't. When it doesn't, the law says it's for thirty years. When it doesn't, the law says it's for thirty years. There could have also been a permanent, a perpetual conservation restriction placed on the land, as was done at that, at that same time period by other, by other donors and grantors to the town. Could have been a permanent conservation restriction. They could have done that, but they didn't. Nowhere in any document does it say anything about perpetuity or forever. No one disagrees that the parties wanted to have this land in conservation because that's what the document says. The documents say. But no document anywhere says anything about perpetuity. And now just to address, and I, we don't need to go into all the detail, I guess, on this, but just to address whether the, the town is doing what it said it would, it would do, okay? The town, in the, in the, in the agreement with the state, with the Secretary of Environmental Affairs, on November fifth, nineteen seventy-eight, before the transfer of land happened, the Conservation Commission members of the town and the Chair of the Board of Selectmen signed an agreement with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts called the Self-Help Agreement, and it laid out all of this, this proposal for the purchase of this land. And what the town said, and this is what the town said, this is what the town agreed to. The town agreed to use this property for conservation purposes unless the town received the appropriate, appropriate authorization from the General Court, the Legislature, the approval of the Secretary of Environmental Affairs, and the authorizations required by the statute. And that's exactly what we're doing. We are doing what, what the town agreed to on November fifth, nineteen seventy-eight. We are doing what the Board of Selectmen at the time and the Conserva, Conservation Commission members at the time told us to do if the property were to be used other than conservation. The agreement doesn't say it'll, it will always be in conservation land, or always be conservation land. It says it'll be conservation land unless the town decides to go through these steps. And that's what we're doing. So we're not breaking any agreement. We're not doing anything different than we said we would do. We're doing exactly what the town said it would do in nineteen seventy-eight. So, so I, so I, I think we do have a difference of opinion about, about whether we're doing the right thing or we're doing what we said we were doing. I look at the documents from forty-five years ago, and they tell us that we're doing exactly what we said we would do if we wanted to take the land out of conservation. So, and, and whether it's eminent domain, we don't have to do the, we don't have to have an eminent domain article. We don't have to do that. But we're doing it because we've been advised by Town Council that that's the most efficient and cost-effective way to do it. So that's why we're, that's why we're doing it through eminent domain. We don't have to do it, but I, but I, as a, as a resident, a taxpayer, if I'm advised by Towns Council that that's the most effective, legal, and cost-effective way to do it, seems to me that that's the way to do it. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Here's Mr. Zulus, Mr. Wells, and then Mr. O'Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Did I unmute? Oh, let me put the hand up. It's a two-step process.
Good job.
These are my final comments in this. I agree with everything that everyone has said. I've, I know how hard Sean has worked, his committee's worked. I clearly understand the needs that Ms. Bradley has talked about. I understand the concerns Ms. Busto has talked about, because we don't normally take conservation land. Does it sit like really well? Like, I don't have like an uneasy feeling about it. Say, yeah, snap my fingers. This is an easy decision to make. No, I'm not gonna say that either. And, and, and to Mike Zulus's point, on the letter of the law, he's absolutely right. He is right. But, and, and to the final point, as far as to the Fompom thing, as you know, Mr. Chair, we've talked a lot about this the last week, you, Mr. Warner. I've not given up on that. Because you have to have a Plan B always. Can't go straight ahead, keep running into a cement wall, smashing your head, and then, oh, what am I gonna do next? So I personally have not given up on Plan. We would have never got to St. Agulhas, would we, Michael, if we didn't stay with that and bought that piece of land? The first reaction, the first meeting, we could have just walked away. So I'm, I, for many reasons, I'm not giving up on that. I've not said this publicly, but this is the first time I'm gonna say it, but Mr. Chair, you and Nick know. This is something I'm not giving up. Know all that, but look at the discussion that we're having just amongst us, and this is exactly what I was trying to say tonight. And I'm, I am gonna vote yes, because I do think this is a decision, not, not just based on the need, but this is a decision, a decision the town meeting has to listen to, has to debate on, and then ultimately has to decide on. That's the form of government we have in this community, and that's what we have to use. So that's, this is really the final thing I'm gonna say about it until we vote, and that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And I just note the point that Mr. Wells made about the fact that what we're discussing is moving this to town meetings. Yes, O'Rourke.
I didn't make a motion, but when we, we'll get to that when we get there.
And Ms. Busto.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Mr. Wells, your reference of banging your head into a cement wall explains why mine's been hurting all day, so I appreciate it.
Sean, I get it. Every time I see your face, you don't even have to say it. I understand it.
We're getting there. So what, what I'd like to do is at least put in context the numbers for which this board approved last year compared to what they are today. So last year, in regards to Article ninety-seven, for conservation land, we were taking six point eight acres, and we were converting into Article ninety-seven, eight point eight seven. So that's roughly a one point two nine ratio. For conservation land ratio, we were taking, again, six point eight three acres and converting into conservation a little over fourteen acres. That was what was approved last year. The amount of work that our, our committee did over this past year is reflected here. The amount of Article ninety-seven land that we're converting this year is seven point two six acres, point eight of which is a road, which really shouldn't be considered, but we're including it. We're turning into Article ninety-seven, ten point eight seven acres, two more acres more than we had last year. In regards to strictly conservation land, again, last year we were at six point eight three that we were taking. This year, we're down to two point eight acres. We're giving back into conservation over fifty-six acres. So again, that's a result of the work my committee has done for this past year. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Busto.
Yes, I have a couple of comments and questions first. I think Mr. O'Rourke just mentioned fifty-something acres coming back? Is, is that, what, what, you referring to the Pope's Pond land?
Correct.
Okay, so that's not in this article?
It, so it,
And we should do a separate article for that, but it's not in this particular one that I have in front of me.
That is part of the consideration that would be paid as part of the eminent domain.
Okay, so, okay, so I have a couple of comments. First of all, the article we have in front of us does not have that in there, and neither do I think it should be. I think it should be its own distinct article. However, I think, again, I think, you know, we all have our own opinions on this. That's great. But this is a bad precedent. It's a bad policy for the town. I don't believe any other town in the Commonwealth has done this, taking conservation. We're not talking about taking land by eminent domain. We're talking about taking conservation land. It's my understanding from watching some of the meetings on all of this that, for instance, Mr. Zulus, I know today, I just wrote down that you said that we don't have to do it this way. You know, we don't have to do, we don't have to do an eminent domain article. We don't have to do it this way. I would suggest that we shouldn't do it that way. At the end of the day, if it goes a different direction, a judge will decide what is right and what is wrong. And as far as, you know, cost and so forth, I mean, there are other things that are going on in this town that we're spending a lot of money on that maybe we shouldn't be either. So I, I don't, I don't wanna see that used as an argument. The argument should be whether or not we should be taking land by eminent domain. I don't think it's the right thing to do because this is conservation land. It's a slippery slope. We have a lot of people in town that donate land to this town or put it in conservation. So Conservation Commission will have all of this land and then maybe decide, okay, we wanna use this land for some other municipal use. It's just, where does it end? I think it's opening a Pandora's box that does not need to be opened to accomplish a school building project. And I, and it certainly, I think it's a wrong precedent for this town. I don't think this town should be known as a town that doesn't respect, respect conservation land and we're willing to sacrifice it. I don't think that's fair.
Thank you, Ms. Busto. Mr. Zulus and then Ms. Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, where does it end? It ends right here. Because when you take conservation land out, you gotta put something back in, and we don't have anything else to put back in. This is it. If you, we don't, there, there, there's nothing more to swap. There's no more land. So it ends right here, right? And it ends with this two point eight acres. It's gonna be, it's gonna be, and, 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 again, it's, it's, it's hard to, to, well, I guess you, we just see it differently in that when you talk about sacrificing conservation land, you're talking about two point eight acres of conservation land coming out and fifty-six going in. And even if you take out the, let's, let's just take out the Pope's Pond, just for, for argument's sake, right? You're still putting in sixteen for two, right? And, and so, so, you know, the, the, the argument of where does it end, again, there's no more conservation land to swap back in, so there'll be nothing to be able to be swapped back out. And, and so I, I, oh, I know what I was gonna say. On the article, on the article, the, the article, the recommendation, my understanding, Town Council can, can fill us in on this. My understanding is the recommendation would include the consideration, and the consideration would include the Pope's Pond thing because we wanna fix that. We wanna get that into conservation. It's not in conservation now. It should go back in. And so, and then finally, I, I do have a question for Town Council, and that is, would it be acceptable to further amend the article to say that, that, and I know it could be fixed in the recommendation, but, but could we just say in the article to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to acquire for school purposes rather than have this include, for, is, is there any, is there any, any requirement that we have for general purposes, including out without limitation? Or can we just say for school purposes? Because I think that's the intent of the, certainly the intent of the School Building Committee, and I think it's the intent of this board as well. So that's my question.
Mr. Freitag.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, the answer is yes. You could change the article to say for school purposes instead of for general municipal purposes.
Mr. Chair, I'd make that as, are we gonna make that as a motion, Michael? If you make that, I'll, I, I'm gonna make a motion. I wanna make a motion right now, Mr. Chair, that we,
Mr. Chair, he hasn't been recognized. My hand is up. That's not the way that should work.
Give me just a moment. I know what the intent is, but can we hold?
Yeah, I'll wait. I'll wait. I, I'm sorry, Ms. Bradley.
All right, and I think, Roxanne, I saw your hand. Did you wanna? So Eric first and then Roxanne.
I will wait. Thank you.
Thanks. And Richard, I didn't, Mr. Wells, I didn't mean to cut you off. I just wanted to,
No, I'm fine. I apologize.
I just wanted to make sure that there's no, there's nothing that can come back to us, is what I wanted to make sure. So I just wanted to say a couple of things real quick, is that I know that this, there's many that have been talking about, is this how we want our town to be known for? Is this how we want our town to be remembered for? That we took our own land in eminent domain? And I, I come back to the fact that there are some other issues here. There's the issue that Milton is two hundred and ninety-seven out of three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns across the Commonwealth for per pupil spending. I come back to the fact, oh, out of three ninety-seven, sorry, somebody just corrected me because obviously I'm living in real time. That's not a, not a statistic I'm proud of at all. There are a lot of statistics in our town that I think we have to consider and consider on a wider level. It's not just about how we, us taking our own land in eminent domain because it's the easiest and honestly, the cheapest way for us to take our own land. But what are we saying as a town that we don't want to do something for our classrooms? Our classrooms are bursting at the seams. Some of the technology classrooms right now have twenty-seven students in them, per classroom. Is that okay? I don't know. I'm looking at the select board now, and I can see only two of us that have children currently in the schools. That is not okay with me to have twenty-seven kids in a classroom. How that teacher does that? God love them. But there is a huge issue with our schools. This is not going away. And while we may not like what we have to do, while we may have all these things, we have to keep the classroom sizes where they should be. We have to get back our libraries. We have to get back our art rooms. We have to get back our band rooms. All of these things have to come back, and the only way that they can come back is if we build another school. There is no other way. Our teachers have nowhere to eat lunch right now. Do you know that? Do you, I mean, do people know that? There is nowhere for our teachers to go and have lunch because those rooms have been taken. I understand this is a hard thing, but I gotta tell you something. Being two ninety-seven out of three ninety-seven is also a statistic I don't like, but I have to live with it every day. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. And Ms. Busto? Did you want, I started, you know,
Why don't you go to Mr. Zulus first? Thank you.
Mr. Zulus, did you wanna be recognized for something other than the motion that Mr. Wells wanted to make?
Yes, I, I just remembered something that I was gonna say that I had forgotten very quickly. And, and, and that is, what, what the eminent, and this is something that, that Roxanne mentioned that triggered it for me, as opposed to having something decide by a judge, what eminent domain allows us to do is to have the residents of Milton decide. It allows us to decide. We get to vote on it, not some judge and not some, and, and where we have to spend a lot of money. So I, I'm in favor of having the residents of Milton decide this issue without spending a lot of money to have some judge decide it. And that's what eminent domain allows us to do, according to Town Council.
Thank you. Ms. Busto, back to you.
Thank you. I just have a couple of comments. I know a former speaker was talking about that we're number two ninety-seven out of three ninety-seven. That, that does not equate to this conversation about eminent domain. We're talking about taking eminent domain conservation land. That is what we're discussing. That's what's in this article. Again, I think it's a bad precedent for this town. I'm for the schools. I have, my kids have went through the schools. And so to think because some of us have had kids that are older, that we don't have concerns about what's going on the schools is ludicrous, and I find it insulting. You know, so I, I don't take that as an argument. What I'm looking at is, again, conservation land, taking it for eminent domain for this purpose. Maybe next time we'll be taking land, using, I'm sorry, using conservation land by eminent domain for another purpose. I mean, that's what I think we're setting ourselves up to. It's a policy, and I don't think it's a good policy that we should be having. And that's, you know, how I feel about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wells, to you.
So thank you, Ms. Chair. I'm ready. So back to where we, Michael and I were ten minutes ago. So I'm going to make a motion to change, amend the article to insert the words that were taken for school, school purposes only. Is that all right? Am I got that right? For school purposes only.
So what we will be doing, Mr. Wells, to help you on this is removing general municipal purposes,
Absolutely.
including without limitations.
Kevin Freitag, get the red pen out. Remove that. So, thank you. And the second thing, just, just a final comment. Could we, and I think Michael said this, I think we could do this. I get, you know, what Roxanne is talking about is one of the walls that Sean's running into ahead for us. Might it be prudent, this article go without the eminent domain, and if, God, if we just, if we keep this way, could we take it? And if, God, if we just, if we keep this way, could we take it out at town meeting? Should we have to? Do we have that option? This is really for Kevin. So, we're just, so we're just going it as a transfer instead of taking it by eminent, eminent domain? I do think it's a wall that we're, I do think it's a wall that ha, we have to get over. There's enough questions out there about it. I mean, I, I just, could we take it out now, Kevin? Or could we take it out at a later time?
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Mr. Freitag.
So, if the question is, at town meeting, could the vote of town meeting drop the portion of the article that says by eminent domain and simply say by purchase or otherwise? The answer is yes. That would be within the scope of the article to drop the eminent domain.
Okay. Because I do think potentially it could be a strategy we might have to take at some point. To get over that wall that I'm referring to, that Sean, yeah. All right, thank you. So, back to the motion. I'm done. I'm all good. Sorry.
You have a motion to remove the phrase general municipal purposes, including without limitations.
That is my motion.
Mr. Wells' motion.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. It's moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion before us? Seeing none, roll call vote. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
I just wanted to double check. This is just changing the wording, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. So, that has been accomplished. Do we have a motion to adopt the amended article? Mr. Zulus?
I'll, I'll move to approve the amended article.
Is there a second to Mr. Zulus?
A second. A second. A second, Mr. Chair.
Further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote? I'm sorry, Mr. Zulus, your hand, did you?
Yeah, I, I was just, I was, I was just gonna say, Richard mentioned ultimately if we have to take out eminent domain. I just wanna point out, again, we're doing this on the advice of Town Council, the wall-
I know, I know, I know.
On the advice of Town Council, in order to let the people of Milton decide and save money. So-
All right, it's been moved and seconded, so we're on the motion. That's what's on the table at the present time for a roll call vote. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
No.
Mr. Doyle, yes. At this time, we will move to articles, item, it is a wronged article, 6A2. And this is to authorize the transfer. Again, there has been wording change. I know it's rather lengthy, but I do feel the responsibility to read it in its entirety. Ms. Bradley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know what? Nothing, nothing. I, I would draw my hand.
Okay, thank you. This article is to see if the town will vote, one, to transfer the care, custody, management, and control of the Select Board for general municipal purposes, including without limitations, school purposes. Approximately 2.1 acres of land located between Blue Hills Parkway and Guile Road is shown on a plan, a copy of which is unfiled at the office of the Director of Planning and Community Development, which are presently under the care, custody, and control of the Milton Conservation Commission. And, two, to transfer to the care, custody, management, and control of the Select Board for general municipal purposes, including without limitations, school purposes. Approximately 4.4 acres of land located between two Blue Hills Parkway and Guile Road is shown on a plan, a copy of which is unfiled at the office of the Director of Planning and Community Development, which are presently maintained by the Parks and Recreation Department for recreation purposes. And, three, to authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court to enact special legislation in accordance with Chapter 274 of the Acts of 2022, otherwise known as the Public Lands Preservation Act, to authorize the town of Milton to use said land for general municipal purposes, including without limitation, school purposes, and without any restrictions imposed on such use by Article 97 of the Amendments to the Massachusetts Constitution, prefaces, quote, Article 97, close quote, in parentheses. And, four, to transfer to the care, custody, management, and control of the Conservation Commission and to be subject to the provisions of Article 97. Approximately six acres of land located on Randolph Avenue and approximately three acres of land located on Herick Drive and approximately one acre of land located on School Street and approximately five acres of land located at the corner of Highland Street and Canton Avenue and possibly other land to be determined prior to town meeting, which are all held by the town for general municipal purposes, is shown, shown on plans, copies of which are on file at the office of the Director of Planning and Community Development. And, five, to authorize the Select Board to obtain all necessary governmental approvals necessary to accomplish the purpose of this article and to act on anything relating thereto. And again, Mr. Valano, thank you for having that on the screen for everyone. Mr. Freitag? You're recognized, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I just wanted to direct your attention to the fourth paragraph. In the middle of the paragraph, when it says, where it says, "and approximately five acres of land located at the corner of Highland Street and Canton Avenue", that section should be removed from the article upon further review of deeds associated with that property. It appears that that property was acquired by the town for open space purposes. Therefore, it would be considered, in my opinion, already under the protections of Article 97, and therefore not appropriate to use as land to mitigate the removal of land from Article 97. So, I would suggest that an amendment be made to the article to remove that text.
Thank you, Mr. Freitag. Any questions on the advice of Town Council? Seeing none? Would there be a motion to amend this proposed article to remove the highlighted and on the screen stricken wording? It reads as follows, "and approximately five acres of land located at the corner of Highland Street and Canton Avenue". Mr. Wells, you're recognized, and then Mr. Zulus. You're muted, Mr. Wells?
Sorry, Mr. Chair. I'm turned on mute. Yeah, so I wanna go back up to, according to school purposes. Do I want, in Article, Paragraph 2, Kevin, after the word Select Board, do we wanna, again here, remove the four words for general municipal purposes? And just have it read, care, custody, management, and control of the Select Board? And without limitation for our school purposes, or maybe, I don't know, I'm not sure how you'd wanna put it, but do I wanna take, similar to the prior article, do we wanna take that out as well? I, I, I'm, I'll be guarded by whatever you think. Either way, I'm fine.
Mr. Freitag?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Wells, I would suggest that in Paragraph 1 and in Paragraph 2, there's language that is similar to the language that you struck from the eminent domain article. So, to make them consistent, you could strike the same language from Paragraph 1 and Paragraph 2, that language being for genuine municipal purposes, including without limitation, school purposes, and replace it with for school purposes only.
Mr. Chair, would you all right if I made that motion right now?
Mr. Wells certainly would. Would you be including in your motion, striking?
Yeah, I got it right here. Paragraph 1 and Paragraph 2, striking the words general municipal purposes, including without limitation, inserting the word before school for school purposes.
Correct. And Paragraph 1 and Paragraph 2, and would you include in your motion what's been recommended in Paragraph 4?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second to Mr. Wells' motion? Mr. Zulus, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll second the motion, and then I have a question, if I may.
Certainly. Motion is seconded. You're recognized.
Thank you. And, and, and the first part of my question was answered by, by Richard, so thank you. And parts 1 and 2, removing that language. My que, my other question is for Town Council, and that is, are there any other amendments? Has this been changed in any other way to what was approved previously by this board? Because we did approve this, but has it been changed in any other way other than these amendments?
Mr. Zulus, I just responded, it has, but not in a substantive way. I reorganized the article so that I, hopefully it would be more clearly understood, where you now have the first paragraph describing land that's coming out of conservation, the second paragraph describing land that's coming out of parks, the third paragraph describing the request for special legislation, the fourth paragraph regarding the mitigation of the removal of the Article 97 land, and then the fifth paragraph, including language which is typical in our request for special legislation. So, I, there's no substantive change. It was just reorganized to be more clear.
Thank you, Mr. Freitag. It has been moved and seconded, and the table is open for discussion. Ms. Musto, you had your hand up first, and then Mr. Wells.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm good. My hand's down, Mr. Chair. I'm taking my hand down. I didn't know it was up.
Thank you. I just noticed in Paragraph 3, looks like you have the same thing with the general municipal. You have the same line in that one. The, did you see it there?
Yes, I see it.
That's one thing. And so, the, so we're taking out the five acres, so you're having 6, 3, 9 acres? I mean, 10 acres, right? And number four, right? Total?
Your, your question, Ms. Musto, is with respect to paragraph?
So, we're just taking, we're just taking away that five acres right there from, from corner of Highland and Canton? So, it's, that's the land that we're-
Yes.
Okay.
That's in Mr. Wells' motion. I'm with you now. In the fourth paragraph, I remember four. So, are you suggesting maybe a friendly amendment for the removal of general municipal purposes, including without limitation, in paragraph itemized as number three?
I think for consistency, yes.
You asking me that, Mr. Chair? I'll find with that.
Okay, thank you. So, we have it all in front of us on the screen as amended? Any further discussion? Ms. Musto, you're recognized.
Oh, I was gonna take that down, but, so, are we gonna just vote on this and then open it up to discussion?
We're having a discussion now, and discussion would lead to a vote. We have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded.
Okay.
As it appears on the screen. It's open for discussion at this time.
Sure. May, may I ask a couple of questions then?
Surely.
Okay. So, I wanted to know, I know there was some mention of a revert clause, and I didn't see that in here. I was wondering if someone could speak to that.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Mr. Freitag, could we turn to you for that, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The clause that I think you're referring to, Ms. Musto, is something that appeared in the recommendation the, the last time this, this article was before town meeting. And it certainly could appear in the recommendation for, for this article as well. Or it could appear in the article itself. You could put it in either place. I just would point out that last time it was the recommendation. And just for, just to sort of explain that piece a bit further, I think, though, what the reverter clause would basically say is that if, you know, you set a timeline, that's how it was written last time. If something doesn't happen within a certain period of time, then the Select Board will, will put the property that is being brought out of conservation and out of parks back into conservation and back into parks. So, it wouldn't involve the state legislature. Obviously, a big part of this article is asking the state legislature to pull art, to pull land out of Article 97. Only they can do that. But this Select Board can certainly put land into, and with town meeting approval, put it into use as article, as conservation or parks. So, just to be clear on that, the, the reverter piece would just be an ask or, or a, a task to be performed by the Select Board, and that could be in either the article or the recommendation.
So, just a follow-up question or comment, I'm just sort of wondering why that wouldn't have been in the article itself. It just seems silly that it wasn't in there, because it's, you know, it seems like it was omitted when it had been discussed in the past. Just a comment.
Mr. Zulus, your hand is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, it wasn't omitted. It was, it was in the recommendation last time, and I think in Town Council can, can, can follow up. But I think the reasoning back last spring, when it was in the recommendation, not in the article, in the recommendation, was that, that there was a desire on Town Council's part to keep the article clean and only refer for the purposes of the state legislature, because that's what's going on with the state legislature. And the recommendation is just what the Select Board would do, separate from the, from the, from the, from, separate from the state legislature. So, so I, you know, I, I don't think the, I don't think the, the School Building Committee, and I, I can certainly speak for myself. I don't care whether it goes, I think it should be there. We recommended it last year. We recommend it now. I think it should be there. I don't care whether it's in the article or the recommendation, just whatever, I, I would follow the advice of Town Council. Whatever Town Council thinks is the best place to put it, that's, that's what we did. We followed Town Council's advice last year. I would follow Town Council's advice and put it in there. That's the intent. That's what School Building Committee wants to do. I think that's what this board wants to do. That's what everyone wants to do. So, I, I would just follow Town Council's on, uh, advice on how to do it.
Mr. Freitag, can we call upon you for advice in response to what we have just heard from Mr. Zulus, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I wish I could tell you, I, I remember my exact reasoning last year for why it was in the recommendation as, as opposed to the article. But I, I don't see any reason if the Select Board is in, in favor of including that as part of this, that it be stated in the article. Obviously, the, the Select Board is in charge of the article. They're not in charge of, you know, it's not, they're not in charge of writing a recommendation that goes in the warrant, that would obviously follow the warrant committee. So, if the, if the Select Board feels so inclined to, to make sure that that's part of this, part of this article and, and discussion at town meeting, then it could certainly include it in the article tonight.
Let's ask the question, if that is the will of the Select Board, and if so, is there a motion to do so? And what the wording would be and where it would be located? Mr. Zulus?
So, I think, I think, I think we should put it in there, if there's, if there's no legal reason not to. And as to where to put it, again, I would defer to Town Council. But it seems to me that under number one, well, you could either do a general provision in, in, in the end and say, provided however, in the event that, and we have to pull out the language from the recommendation last year, provided however, in the event that, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, the land shall revert back, 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 Select Board, the land shall revert back. Or you could put it separately in, in Item 1, after the word development, and Item 2. Item 2, is that the 4.4? I'm sorry, no, Item 3, after where it says recreational purposes, seems to me. So, you could, I mean, you know, again, I'd defer to Town Council on it, but it seems to me you could do it as an all-encompassing at the end to cover those two, or you can put it in each paragraph. And I don't know, Kevin, if you have the, the language from last year on the recommendation on the reverter clause.
Okay.
I can see if I can pull that up right now. Hmm. So I'm looking at the warrant article from last year. There was no recommendation by the warrant committee in the warrant. Was there a, just trying to remember if we had a subsequent recommendation submitted by the warrant committee?
Well, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please, Mr..
Yeah, we pulled back.
I have not found it in my papers.
We pulled back the article, so it would have been in one of the drafts. Would have been in the draft. Probably the draft recommendation.
I might have that. Do you want me to look through my old warrant committee notes?
All right, I have the language. The language that we had proposed was something like this, and provided that, in the event that the town does not appropriate funding for the aforementioned school purposes on the Blue Hills Parkway parcel, on or before June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven, the Blue Hills Parkway parcel shall be transferred back to the care, custody, and control of the Milton Conservation Commission to be subject to the provisions of Article ninety-seven. And then there was further language regarding the Randolph Ave parcel, the Herick Drive parcels, going back to the select board to be used for general municipal purposes. So basically unwind the entire article if this wasn't done within a certain time period.
Do you have some advices to where such a statement?
So what I would suggest is, I think that it, looking at where it was in the proposed draft, it appeared at the end of the recommendation, and I think it would make sense here for it to appear at the end of the recommendation as well. And I would, I would suggest doing so as a new paragraph, a paragraph six, that would essentially track the same, the same language that I've just read to you. The question is whether you would, you would want it to apply to all of the parcels. In other words, is it the, is it simply that if this doesn't work within a certain time period, that the land that was taken out, if that is, you know, assuming that the special legislation passes and the land is taken out of the protections of Article ninety-seven? Is the idea then that if a certain thing does not happen within the time period, let's say five years, if you don't get funding within five years, that then the select board transfers that back, that land back into two point eight acres to conservation and four point four acres to parks, full stop? Or is it also that the land on Herick Drive and Randolph Ave and School Street would also go back to general municipal purposes and essentially unwind the entire transaction?
Members thoughts? Mrs. Zulus, you're recognized.
I'm really agnostic on that. I'm happy to leave the, leave the land with the Conservation Commission and just unwind the, and just put the other land back into conservation. Or if there's a compelling argument to unwind the whole thing, I'm, I really I would say only with respect to the date, last year, we, we were talking about five years. I think five years is a, is a, is a fair amount of time, given the process here. And so I would just say that the date, we would put the date out rather than two thousand twenty seven, maybe May first, two thousand twenty eight, because that would be, that would be the five years. But as to whether the whole thing gets unwound, personally, I'm happy to leave the land in conservation.
Would have seen that the focus is really on the clause addressing the Parkway property, what we referred to as the Gower Road area? Is there a sense among the members of the select board? Is through option A or option B? Mr. Zulus is agnostic?
Only with respect to this, Mr. Chair.
Fair enough. Ms. Musto?
Can you just repeat the two options again?
I'll defer to Mr. Freitag on that. My paraphrasing was, the first option would address only the land at the Gower Road site. The second option would also include the lands on Randolph Avenue, Herick Drive, and School Street that are proposed to be entered into conservation. So would you want all to come out after five years or just the Gower Road area? Ms. Bradley, you're recognized?
Hi, Mr. Chair. Thanks so much. It just seems to me that if we are gonna get wrapped up in litigation, five years seems a little tight to me, and maybe I can look at other attorneys like Kevin or Mike, but it just seems like that's a tight timeline.
Thank you. Did you have an opinion on option A or option B?
Me?
Yes.
Honestly, Mr. Chair, no.
So you are agnostic on this as well? Okay. You had raised the point for consideration, Ms. Musto. Did you have a preference one way or the other? You're recognized. You're unmuted. I stand.
Thank you. Well, it seems like we're putting it in for a certain purpose, and we probably should take it out because it's for a certain purpose. It just.
It being?
Well.
The Gower Road area?
I think everything, well, it seems like if we're, if we're making considerations for everything here, then you probably have to revert everything, I would think. Put everything back the way it was, seems like to me. That was what I would think.
See no disagreement with that? Let's add a number six. Mr. Valana, could you bring up the document, please?
Fair one.
Thank you. And Mr. Freitag, can we call on you for the wording, please, so that it can be entered as appropriate?
Yes, I'm gonna email it to Nick right now.
Okay.
This is. Nick, what I just emailed to you under the subject line is option B would basically be my attempt to include language that undoes the entire transaction. So we'll actually include authorization by town meeting to go back to the legislature if we need to unwind this as well. Because my concern would be that once the legislature takes something out of Article ninety-seven, puts something into, into the protections of Article ninety-seven, specifically here, the land on Randolph Ave and the land on Herick Drive and on School Street, that's gonna go into Article ninety-seven. We may need to go back to the legislature then to say, none of this worked out. We need to pull that land back out and put it back into general municipal purposes. So I would, I would get authorization to do both at the same time from, from town meeting.
Could everybody please review this? And while that's been done, Kevin, we have a motion that's been seconded. On the other changes, would you want on this substantive change, or more substantive change, I should say, amendment?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, part of inquiry, are we reading section six?
Six, yes, that is correct.
Thank you so much.
I'll read it. Six, and provided that, in the event that the town does not appropriate funding for the aforementioned school purposes on the Blue Hills Parkway parcel, on or before June thirty, two thousand twenty seven, the Blue Hills Parkway parcel shall be transferred back to the care, custody, and control of the Milton Conservation Commission to be subject to the provisions of Article ninety-seven. The Randolph Avenue parcel and the Herick Drive parcels shall be transferred back to the select board to be used for general municipal purposes. And the Gower Road parcel shall be transferred back to the parks and recreation department for active recreation purposes. And the select board shall be authorized to petition the general court to enact special legislation to authorize the town of Milton to use Randolph Avenue parcel and the Herick Drive parcels for general municipal purposes, and without any restrictions imposed on such use by Article ninety-seven. And to petition the general court to enact special legislation to authorize the change in control of the Gower Road parcel from Conservation Commission to the parks and recreation department, and to authorize the select board to obtain all necessary governmental approvals necessary to accomplish the purposes of this article. I would just suggest that where we have Randolph Avenue parcel and the Herick Drive parcels, that after Randolph Avenue parcel, we insert comma, School Street parcel. That make sense? Mr. Freitag?
Yes.
As well. That's correct.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, I would also recommend at the bottom of the paragraph where it says, and to authorize the select board to obtain all necessary government approvals, you can remove that. That's already in the article. That appears below this text already. So strike that. And I would also take out, I think that the last part of that last sentence as well, and to petition the general court to enact special legislation to authorize the change in control of the Gower Road parcel. I would take that out. That's, that wouldn't happen either. We would just unwind everything that we have done. So I think you can strike that. And then I think you'd look to the date in the second line. I think you've spoken about changing that date, and then I think you're, you're probably in pretty good, you're probably in pretty good shape here. I might, I might make a tweak after the vote, but it wouldn't be substantive. It would just be to make sure that the language is correct. But substantively, this does what it seems to me the board is looking to do.
So June thirtieth, twenty twenty eight. This would be five years. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Freitag.
Oh, and if I may, just again, down at the bottom where it says, special legislation to authorize the town of Milton to use the Randolph Avenue parcel. Oh, and you've included the School Street parcel there as well. Okay, that's, that's great. Yep, both places. I think you're in good shape.
Thank you. Ms. Bradley and then Mr. Zulus?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just wondering if in concerns to this date, if we can put on or before June thirtieth, twenty twenty eight, or on or before an SJC ruling? I am not sure that if this goes all the way through, that we will have actual rulings by June thirtieth, twenty twenty eight. And Mike, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I just am concerned about the timing of this. I mean, if people are gonna throw everything in the kitchen sink, I just don't think that this is, Kevin, what do you think? I don't, I don't like the date in there, to be honest with everybody.
Mr. Freitag, you're recognized?
So I think that you have a couple of options. You could leave the date as it is. You could extend the date out if you felt that was appropriate. You also keep in mind that the authorization that's being extended does, the select board here could be changed or modified pursuant to another town meeting vote. So if, you know, if you're coming up on June thirtieth, twenty twenty eight, or anywhere near it, and it doesn't appear that you're in a position to go forward with the project yet, but you wanna keep it on track, you could ask the select, you could ask town meeting to push that date out.
Oh, just like the bylaw committee. That makes total sense. Okay.
Mr. Zulus?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I, and in addition to that, I don't expect that there will be any, any court action. I don't expect there'll be any delay caused by court action, but I certainly don't expect any court action will enjoin the town from appropriating funding. So I.
Thanks, Mike.
Not really concerned about, yeah, I'm not really concerned about that. We do have a process to go through here. We need, you know, there is a process to go through with the legislature and with the federal government and with, with, you know, design of a project in order to, to be in a position for funding. So I think, you know, that, I think this gives us the appropriate amount of time to do that. And then, Kevin, I would only suggest on, in paragraph six, we do have some definitions that were carried through from the prior draft, and you just probably just need to add those definitions up in one through five. Now, the Randolph Ave parcel, just add, you know, just add those definitions so you have appropriate references.
Mr. Freitag, your hand is raised? It is down. Okay. So we have a motion that's been seconded. We have subsequently added the wording in number six. Do we have a motion to that effect? In other words, to add number six to what has been previously moved and seconded? Ms. Musto?
Yes, I had a comment about the timeframe and the wording of on or before June thirtieth, twenty twenty eight. I was actually gonna propose. I was actually gonna propose something a little shorter than that, thinking that, you know, we should look at when the legislators and have the legislative session and getting it approved, if so be it. And I was looking at January twenty twenty-five. And at that point, we could always go back to town meeting for bringing it, you know, for further approval if we needed to at that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Need further comment? Is there a motion? Mrs. Zulus?
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think, I, I think that January twenty twenty-five is too short. I, I think we need, I think it's only fair because of the process that's involved here to give the, to give the town, you know, to give the town committee and town council the time to get this right rather than, rather than having an artificial deadline. I think, I think five years is an appropriate amount of time. You know, we don't want a situation where we're in the middle of something and then we're right in the middle of something, and then we have to, have to go back. We have to go back while we're in the middle of things. So I, so I think, I think it's only fair, given the process that's involved in here and the need to get this right and to get the, we don't wanna rush the town with respect to funding. We don't wanna rush. So I, so I think, I think it's only fair to, to give that amount of time in order to get this done. I, I don't, I don't, I don't think, I don't think two and, you know, two and a half years is a fair amount of time to, to, to expect all of this process to get done.
I would only note on that point, if I may, that throughout these discussions over the past year, both within and without the Select Board, five years seems to have been the timeframe that's in people's minds. And you can correct me if I'm wrong. Ms. Musto, your hand is still raised. Did you wish to be addressed?
Thank you. I was just going to state that you'd be, you're taking the land out for a considerable amount of time, for five years. And it made more sense, I think, to do this a little bit of a shorter timetable, and you can always go back and get, you know, approval from town meeting. So I'm more in favor of doing the shorter timeframe. And I was gonna make a friendly amendment and see if I can make a friendly amendment to change the time to January first.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-five.
This hasn't yet been moved?
Okay, thank you.
So I would ask if there's a motion to adopt. But we have in number six?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt what we have in twenty-six with the date of June thirty of two thousand twenty-eight, the five years that we've all discussed for the last nine months.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Is there a second?
I'll second that. It's Aaron.
Thank you. Ms. Bradley, it is moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
I will abstain.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Hey, thank you. Very important discussion. And now let's turn to the next article on our agenda, which is
Chair, can I ask a question?
Certainly, Ms. Bradley.
When the screen came back, Richard is there. Should we have asked him in the roll call vote?
I'm sorry, thank you. He was not on mine.
Yeah, mine either, Mr. Chair, at all. So when we all came back to full screen, he popped in. So I'm not sure.
Let's see if he's
Not sure what to do now.
Richard, are you with us?
He did let me know that he had stepped away for a few minutes.
Oh, he did. Okay. Mrs. Zulus?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanna make sure, the, the, we did move to, we did have a motion to approve the art, not just the amendments, but the article.
I think we need to do the entirety now. So
So I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to approve the, approve the article with the amendments.
Thank you for that catch. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Seconded?
Yeah.
Is there any further discussion? Mrs. Zulus, your hand is raised?
Oh, sorry, sorry, yes.
Let's check, double check and see if Mr. Wells is back. Okay. Roll call vote then, seeing no further discussion. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
I'll just check on Mr. Wells. Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Abstain.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Now we can move on to six A three, appropriation for the school building committee. And Mr. Villana, if you could put this out for post-article up?
Lynn, Lynn has her hand up.
Lynn?
Sorry.
I did that by mistake.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bradley. To see if the town will vote to authorize the school building committee to employ an owner's project manager, architects, engineers, or other professionals for the purposes of conducting feasibility studies and/or preparing detailed plans, specifications, working drawings, and other necessary documents for the construction and furnishing of a school building to see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate for the purposes of this article to determine how said appropriation shall be raised, whether by borrowing, transfer from available funds, or otherwise, and to act on anything related to then we have draft language for potential positive recommendation. I'll just read that since it's on the screen. Recommended that the town vote to authorize the school building committee to employ an owner's project manager, architects, or other professionals for the purposes of conducting feasibility studies and/or preparing detailed plans, specifications, working drawings, and other necessary documents for the construction and furnishing of a school building and to, and appropriate two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from funds certified by the Department of Revenue as free cash for the purposes of this article. Rose open to discussion. Mrs. Zulus, you're recognized.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the article.
Ms. Musto, it has been moved. Is there a second? Mr. Wells, welcome back.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. It is moved and seconded. Ms. Musto, you are recognized for discussion.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions. One was, when you're talking about conducting feasibility studies, does that involve anything on the land site? Because I would wanna make sure that before anything is approved, that we are not taking down trees or, or anything on that site ahead of anything until we get full approval. I wouldn't want that done.
Just for a rock, can we turn to you?
Yeah, thank you. So the, the money that would be allocated is essentially for engineering plans. There's nothing physically we can do on the site until we own it. So everything you see there would essentially be on our paper.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
We have a motion, Mr. Chair. Did someone make a motion? We are seeking a motion at this I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to approve the two hundred and seventy-five thousand, two seventy-five. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Wait.
I think we, didn't we not move this?
Yeah.
Yeah, it has already moved in second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I just came back late. That's why I asked a question.
Is there any further discussion, Mr. Zulus?
Just to clarify, it was a motion to approve the article, not just the amount of motion to approve the article.
That's correct. I apologize. Thanks for that clarification, Michael. Okay, moved and seconded. No further discussion. Roll call vote, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you. And I'll move on to item number seven on our agenda for this evening. Discussion approval letter of support for the Forbes House grant application for the restoration of the barn and carriage house included in the folder. And Mr. Napoli, did you have your hand raised?
Yes, you have to close the warrant.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry.
I'll make a motion to close the warrant, Mr. Chair.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Moved and seconded. I see no discussion. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle? Yes. And I had that written down. Thank you.
These are the times when I miss Miss Collin, Mr. Chair. She never let us forget something like that.
Right.
Thank you, Lynn. She must have been texting you or something or calling you.
Oh, Lynn is, Lynn's on top of all that we have.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so now seven is read the discussion approval, a letter of support for the Forbes House grant application for the restoration of the barn and carriage house. And as I began to say, we have that documentation in our packets, and I'm sure everybody's reviewed it. So is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the grant application by the Forbes House Museum. Who's it to, Mr. Chair? It's a state, if I remember, it's a state grant.
It's going to the Mass Historical Commission?
It's the Mass Historical Commission.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Moved and seconded. We have with us Heidi Von. Let's recognize Heidi and see if she would like to comment. It's moved and seconded. Heidi, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was kind of rejoining, I guess, as a participant, so I'm not exactly sure what you need me to say to introduce it. If anything, I don't wanna take up too much of your time. So it is a request for one hundred thousand dollars through the Mass Historical Commission, their Preservation Projects Fund. It's a very competitive grant process. It is a matching grant. We have been successful in the past, and this is for the, the barn and carriage house, which I know you approved a letter of support to the seventeen seventy-two foundation through Preservation Massachusetts. And we're grateful for that. That is pending, and we hope you'll support this letter as well.
Thank you. Any questions for Heidi Von, for many members of the Select Board? We wish you continued success.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded. No further discussion. Roll call vote, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Wells?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. At this time, I'm going to recuse myself from agenda item number eight, as I'm a member of the candidate's committee. So, Mr. Zulus, can I turn to you, please, as vice chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item A is discussion approval of the request of the Milton Arts Center to rent the space for a political fundraiser on March twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three. We have a request from Joan Clifford of Milton Arts Center with respect to a fundraiser for Cheryl Taggias on March nineteenth, March twenty-sixth, I guess, two thousand twenty-sixth. The date has changed. We have a policy for approvals of the Milton Arts Center, and we have a, a policy that has been, was previously, has previously been utilized.
Enacted.
Yeah, I was gonna say utilized, but enacted. Utilized and that allows the use of the Milton Arts Center for political fundraising function as long as there is prior approval of the, the, the Select Board, as long as no town equipment is used with respect to the finance, with respect to the fundraiser, as, as long as rent is charged to the fundraising entity on the same basis as any other rental and as on the, and as long as other fundraising, political fundraising entities have equal opportunity to rent the, and rent, to rent the property and that there's nothing is done by the organizers of the fundraising function to represent the town of Milton or the Select Board is endorsing any candidate. So presuming that all of that is complied with by the Milton Arts Center, which we expect it will, because it has been in the past. We have allowed this before. The first step is for the Milton Select Board to, to approve this use. Comments or questions? Ms. Musto?
I make a motion, oh, sorry.
Hold on, Richard, hold on, comments?
I just had a question from Kevin Freytag. Does this apply to all of our town buildings or any, so are these like all of our town buildings? Or which ones can be used in this, this aspect? And does it matter if any of these entities have gotten any kind of town funding? For like whatever's residing, like if it was an entity that was renting from us and they got some kind of funding from us, does that make a difference?
So in response to the, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Freytag, please.
Oh, Mr. Vice Chair, acting, acting chair. In response to the first question, the Select Board has control of town property and can, at its discretion, rent town property as it does things like for the, for instance, the, the gazebo and a few other places. I'm not sure that all spaces in town buildings are available to rent or which other ones are, but I know that there are some, and to the extent that there's a question regarding rental, it would go to the Select Board. In terms of the, the funding, I'm not entirely clear on how to respond to that question, because I don't know what funding the Select Board would be providing to a political candidate. I mean, I'll be clear that they shouldn't be providing any funding whatsoever to a political candidate. So if that's an issue, then we, there's another conversation that we need to have. But at least it sounds like if, if everything is happening in accordance with the policy here, then the rental is fine.
Okay, yeah, I was not implying that for political candidate. I was just saying if there was some business or something that was renting one of our buildings. And they applied for, say, an opera grant or something like that, and we gave them funds. Does that change the situation? That's all I'm asking.
I don't, I, I don't think so. I think that they're two separate issues. The biggest piece here is that the, the town isn't using any town funds or town personnel for any political purposes. It is renting space on an equal basis to, to everyone, including this particular event. That's the way that I see it.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. Just wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roxanne Richard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I was just gonna
Acting.
You know, as, I'm Mr. Acting Chair. As you know, you were on the, on that board when we voted this. So this, the, the Milton Arts Center is a unique piece of property, because it's one of the few that people do rent it. It can have a license. You can have events and, and full disclosure, I, I rented it for an event myself, and you pay the rent to them. But I think we didn't quote it, Michael, in the, in the policy, like if one wants to rent it, anyone can. It's like, it's available to any candidate that wants to rent it.
Yeah, and I, I read it very quickly, and I probably should have read it a little more slowly. But one of the, one of the requirements the town council provided for us in this policy is that, and I'll read it a little more slowly, other political fundraising entities should have an equal opportunity to rent the, the property for political fundraising functions. That's one of the five requirements the town council set out for rental of this property.
So I'm, oh, sorry, Aaron's got her hand up.
Ms. Brown?
Sorry, just real quick, how are other political campaigns supposed to know that they can rent this property?
Well, that's a good question.
Sorry, Mr. Acting Chair, but I don't know how, I would have never thought that we could rent any town-owned building, ever. And I just am interested that now we can or have in the past. So how do we tell people that they can rent these things for political events?
Well, we, we rent this to the Milton Arts Center, and it's the Milton Arts Center that requests the permission. So it seems to me it would be up
It's through the five oh one C three? So it's through the five oh one C three? So it's through the Art Center?
Correct. They, they, they requested, they are our lessee for this property. They have requested the permission to do
So right, I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Acting Chair. But so like the Discovery Schoolhouse, they're a five oh one C three. We could ask through them currently, because they're renting a town building.
So, so we have the policy from town council only with respect to the Milton Arts Center and the, and the, the property at three thirty-four Edge Hill Road. So it seems to me if we had that request, then we would go to town council and see if, see if the same policy would and should apply, and, and we would probably have to get that, to get that opinion from town council.
I would hope that Milton Art Council would start to spread the word that other political candidates can rent the space through them, because that is a wonderful space, and if only I had known that a year ago. So I just think it's something that folks don't, actually don't know about.
Well, I think it's a good point, Ms. Bradley. Well, I think it's a good point, Ms. Bradley. And we have several political candidates on this Zoom tonight and several political candidates watching. So hopefully the word will, will get out. And many political operatives, I'm sure, are tuning in well.
Thanks so much, Acting Chair.
Hopefully the word will get out, Mr. Wells.
So just to follow up, as you know, Michael, again, what I said earlier, the, the odds on lease is unique to anything else. Similar questions to Ms. Bradley's have been asked about the council on aging. So that this was put into the lease when it was created. And it's to help the, to their credit to Joan Clifford. As you know, you know, like I do. She does a great job of being amenable to anyone and giving it to anyone that comes to us. It doesn't have to be a political thing. You could, you could rent it for a fundraiser. You could rent it for a charitable thing. It's all, your real lease is very included. They're very good upon us.
I had, I had, I had child birthdays there.
There you go. See, I, I like, I, I mean.
We had, we had clowns and, clowns and pin the tail on the donkey, so.
All right, so I'm ready to make a motion if you're ready to take it.
I'm, I'm more than ready. Feed the seat back to the proper chair.
I think he went home. If he was smart, he turned off his screen and he went home for the night. So I make a motion to approve the request of the Milton Arts Center to rent for a political fundraiser on Sunday, March twenty-six, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
Motion's been made. Motion, well, Roxanne got it. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley? Ms. Brad, Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus, yes. Mr. Doyle, rescue me.
Yeah, I know.
It's a pleasure to be trying to be with you. I miss you all.
Go to confession, Arthur. You just told a lie.
That's, it's Lynn. Rich is going to have me doing some penance. Number nine, Town Administrator's Report. Mr. Milano, can we turn to you?
I have nothing tonight, Mr. Chair. I will make a full report next week at a regular meeting.
And the Chair likewise will not be reporting this evening. Is anybody with response to public comment? Seeing none. Let's. Here you are.
Thank you. We had a speaker who came and spoke about the Pope's Pond Land and about the process to put it into conservation. So I'm wondering if we could have a separate article as was requested by resident to put it into conservation land for maybe the next town meeting, not for May, but for perhaps the next one in the fall. I don't know.
Is it, is it?
Milano, or?
Let's get some advice from Mr. Freitag on this. Yeah, Mr. Wells, I see your hand. You're recognized.
Am I correct? Is it, is it in the article now? Is it in the article now or it's not? Well, we opened the warrant tonight. Did we put it in the article?
Yeah, it's covered.
Pope's Pond?
Yeah.
I didn't see it in there.
I thought we quoted in tonight's article. If we did, we'd have to reopen the warrant. If not, I'm fine with putting it on the, you know, going for the fall, all town meeting.
Mr. Zulus?
So, so it, it, it was, we had the discussion of this. And I think Mr. Freitag can, can tell us, but, but it was intended, it is intended to be part of the article. And the only question is whether it goes in the article in the recommendation. So, so it's intended as part of the, as part of the, as part of the the processes.
Mr. Freitag, you're recognized.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. What I'll add is that it's, it's not specifically mentioned in the article. But the, my understanding was the, the intent was that a recommendation would specifically include the property that was going to be used to sort of, to pay for, if you will, the land that was being taken by eminent domain. And that part of that list, one of the properties in that list might be the Pope's Pond property.
Ms. Musto?
So, Mr. Freitag, just for clarification, in the, in the eminent domain article, that is the article that you're, you're saying that it would be in the recommendation?
Yes, it could be. If you, if you look at the eminent domain article, it, it just talks generally about what consideration or appropriation the town might make. And it was, my, my understanding was it was purposely left open with the concept that at least in the past, that's usually been where we've identified the parcels specifically by meets and bounds as opposed to perhaps having them set forth in the, the article themselves. That was my understanding here as well, that that, that they would be identified in the recommendation.
Mrs. Zulus?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Freitag, would it be, would it be helpful to include a proposed recommendation with the article?
Well, recommendations are the purview of the Warren Committee. But certainly if, you know, I, I think that Sean has the list of the, the properties that were being considered. If the Select Board wanted to subsequently amend its article and list the properties outright in the article itself, that would, that's certainly something that the Select Board could do.
Ms. Musto?
I think, to me, I think it's just cleaner if you do it in a separate article. If you have the Pope's Pond in a separate article. Because depending what happens going forward, you know, it may eventually get in there or may not. So to me, it would make more sense to do it for a special, you know, for maybe the special town meeting in the fall to do a separate article that addresses that issue because it seems like it was more of a technicality issue that sort of just needs to be cleaned up with its own article.
Let me see if I am processing this correctly for you, Roxanne. We will have the May town meeting. And following the May town meeting, if an outcome is not to put the Pope's Pond land into conservation, you would advocate an article to do so as a special fall town meeting?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so let's have that on a sidebar for a future agenda. Would that, would that work? So it doesn't get lost. I want to make sure we retain that.
Hands back up, Mr. Chair. Roxanne's.
Yes.
I, I would.
That's all right.
I would say.
How much for the thirty minutes I was promised this would be tonight?
I know. I would say so, but I, again, I, I just think it really shouldn't even be in this article. I know what, what, what the feeling is of this board. But I, I, again, I don't think it should be in the, I don't think it should be in the comment. It shouldn't be included. I think it should be totally separate. That's just my own feeling on it. But if, at the least, it should be its own article, and that should happen in the fall.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Advice well taken. Item number twelve is our future meeting dates. A week from tonight, Tuesday, March twenty-first, Tuesday, April fourth. On Tuesday, April eleventh, we'll have the quarterly meeting of the Governor, State, and Trustees. And then that will be followed by Tuesday, April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Mrs. Zulus?
Mr. Chair, maybe I understood. Maybe it's next Tuesday that's going to be the short meeting? Is that right?
Yeah, write, somebody write that down right now.
It's a ten item.
I misunderstood. I thought this was going to be the short one, but it must be next week.
Well, you're lucky my classmate can't move to Zoom for, for being in person.
It's a little bit of gallows humor, isn't it?
Yes. I'm gonna, I'm bringing a stopwatch. I'm gonna start it right at seven. At seven thirty, I'm gonna sound a fog on.
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor? Roll call. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Absolutely.
Ms. Bradley? Ms. Musto?
Yes.
I just want to say, as we adjourn, a thank you to everybody for the contributions made tonight. The members, those who were with us, Mr. Freitag, thank you very much for the advice that you have provided, Lynn for keeping me on my toes. And I wish everybody a very relaxing and enjoyable evening. I'm off to a Conservation Commission meeting. Do you want to adjourn me?
I like your sweater, Arthur. That's a nice.
One Zoom to the next. Our St. Patrick's Day coming up. I had to wear it.
Night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Thank you.
Hey, everybody.
Good night, Lynn. Thank you.